First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. May 16, 2024, September 19, 2024, November 21, 2024. We'll defer to a later meeting. We do have the June 5, 2025 minutes in front of us. Do we have any comments or revisions? Let's go to you, please. Page three. For the American reclaimed, third paragraph. Engineer Hoffman stated this application was, it should say formally approved, not formally approved. And then on page four, quickway imports. Again, third paragraph. The application proposes three and a half acres of disturbance. It says which is one acre over threshold. It should say which exceeds the one acre limit or the one acre threshold. And the last section with bullet points. Look at I T E traffic generation to confirm no significant traffic increase. And then the final one, page five, introductory law number 13. Town should be capitalized for besides that. The very last line, the board authorized attorney Norton to prepare a red line report. The word "and" should be added there. Other revisions, comments?
Aye, ma'am.
In that case, could I motion in to approve the minutes of November 5 as modified?
Oh, second.
Okay. Eric's by second by Neil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, ma'am.
I abstain.
One abstention. June 19, 2025 minutes will be deferred to a later date. We do have July 3, 2025 minutes in front of us. I have only one comment. On page two, the list of all the board members that voted. I believe Giovanni should be on there as well. I'm not sure why he did not. Or was? Okay. Other comments or revisions? Good. If you say. Okay. In that case, I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 3, 2025 as modified. Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Next item on the agenda, seventeen M flex building, 12-2-43. Application for site plan and special permit approval for warehouse and office on 8.9 plus or minus acres along New York State Route 17M and Cannon Hill Drive, I-zone AQ3 floodplain and ponding, stream corridor and water supply watershed overlands. We're here this evening to discuss revised plans. Welcome.
Good evening, I am Joe Fowler, representing the Alphabix Salt Lake Cities here as well. As mentioned in the, you know, we did submit revised plans based on a letter received from Sean prior to the opening of our initial public hearing. The public hearing was closed last month, so he's planned to reflect those changes. And we did receive updated letter from Mr. Hoffman, and there are some slip comments that we need to address, and I think one or two other comments, minor nature, all very respondable. So take those into consideration, and I hope that we'll be able to be part of our next submission. And I'm hoping that John is going to be here if you want him to, you know, continue to discuss a little. Look at that.
Wow.
Joe, can we, literally, John just going through the plans and just give you.
I was second on the agenda to get on till late 3:00.
Joe, could you just point out some of the changes that were made since the last set of plans, sir?
Okay, well, they were mostly technical in nature. We had, well, let me see, we had to update the planning analysis. There were a lot of, there was a lot of comments, and we just go with the submission letter. We went through them item by item. What I'll, I'll just go through. There were some comments on, we updated the water use calculation based on number of employees. We did.
How did you come up with the number of the water?
Actually, what we did was, we backed into that, utilizing the sanitary facilities closed when we did our initial design, we had based it on square footage, and we converted it to employees from square footage. We added, we updated the impervious coverage calculations. We re-did the turning analysis, responded to comments. There were some issues, but we got rid of the chain link fence, put on guardrails. The comments for the most part were very detailed, warranted, nothing that would have changed the site plan per se. Let's see. We added, we did add a, to this plan, which was, I guess that would be a large, larger issue, we did get a licensed landscaping architect or she's the plan set now, that are based on that. And I know Sean did have a comment on this particular set of plans about the planning or reviewing, and having, they had comments on that particular plan, and if there are any.
With the landscape plan adjusted, those Karen's trims.
Correct.
They're listed as L1, L2.
That will certainly be checked.
That'll be listed as page 10 and 11?
Yes, absolutely. There were some, also some minor comments on the sanitary facilities design as far as adding the actual, the test runs, the actual, the actual design calculations for sizing the system, also some comments on the pump station, which we've taken care of, our tunnel work, the alarm, which we will take care of that as well. And, I mean, on the submission letter that we sent in, we did have a detailed response to it, and there's a lot of minor things, we had some rotations, modified some rotations. But for the most part, the plans of the plans being, they have changed all parties in the same location.
Sean, did you, based on your last review?
Yes, so, the board may have noticed they had a chance through my report, it was a little lengthy, but if you go through the comments, a lot of them have been directed to the applicant or recommendations due to informational, because the applicant has done that already, the board has addressed it. Again, the applicant was working on comments from last year, because, remember, you opened a public hearing and adjourned it a number of times, waiting for a D O T to get back to the applicant. I did, as you requested at your last meeting, I did send the application package over to John Cannon. I thought of them, and I took him to be here this evening, but not here yet, I sent him a text, didn't respond yet either. So, as Mr. Fowler indicated, the addition of the landscaping plan was probably the largest change to the site plan and design. There were a number of minor changes that were either in response to board comments, that's public hearing, public hearing comments, or my comments. And they've addressed the majority of them.
One of the comments you had in your memo, John, the last one on miscellaneous, the earth burn, you're referring to, the Burmese plant with six-foot tall evergreens as the visibility of the building, but that doesn't match up with Karen's new plant. It doesn't look like this.
Yeah, there is a discrepancy with that. I think I might have had a general comment to, you know, resolve all discrepancies and things like, and that's usually something, as you know, we would look at and make sure it gets resolved before it goes to signature.
Comments from the board?
Well, as I look at the landscape, when I assume, when I looked at the prior one and what I read as the most current one, I don't see any evergreen trees, I see evergreen shrubs. And you are putting up, proposing to put up the facility. That is very close to 17M. That is in a wind reservoir, watershed area. And I think it would be in the interest of the community to have a more significant year-round green buffer to make the facility more attractive.
You do have clusters of the red cedar.
You have.
The clusters, the fat across.
Exactly right. It's the clusters which are separated by large distances, significant distances, and the rest are deciduous trees, which are six months out of the year, not very effective as a vegetative buffer. So I would suggest to you, if you take a look at that, it'd be, workers mean, you really do want a vegetative buffer year-round.
Okay, I will, assuming you give that information, but let's see what the board thinks. I mean, I assume you're still looking for some mix of deciduous trees in there.
Some mix, but predominantly, those trees which would afford effective green buffer as you are only about, the width of the landscaping area itself seems to be 10 feet off of 17, the edge is 17, to 35 feet off of 17. I mean, there ought to be some protective greenery there.
Gotcha.
Any other comments? Others on the board, other comments?
Along with, please don't put up white pines. They're the same things that are across the street that Al Torres and they're discussing.
That's a good point, and I did, I mean, it should be those trees that are able to withstand a lot of heavy traffic nearby.
Yeah, a couple things. Well testing, why can't that be done now and then? I just, I'm hesitant to let that stay until, I think the request was until the C O.
What we're requesting is to present the plan, the plan now, have that approved, and do that as part of the construction of the site, is one of the things in that title we did. When we did the first building, the Cannon Hill building, so we're hoping to put it the same way. I mean, we don't really anticipate any issues because of.
My recommendation on that, I'm sorry, I tried to interrupt. My recommendation on the original building was that it was required prior to the building permit, and I don't think it was completed at that time, and it was completed prior to C O, maybe it needed to be completed, and I think the board also at that time, the government approved on the board instituted a well protection law because, you know, they didn't want to have this well, and not have a potential impact.
Okay. So I'm sorry.
No, I'm pretty sure, Mr. Frisch, I'll open your office, prepare a well protection response plan, file a well protection law.
I can tell you, because I think I wrote it.
In any case, I still would rather have the well testing done.
I wrote the plan response and remediation plan. Yes, it is.
Frisch, your words, please.
I got lucky, it sounded familiar.
In any case, I still would like to have the well testing done prior to the building permit, rather than have to C O. If by chance, and I don't anticipate a problem, but if by chance we did come up with a problem, I hate to tell you that they knocked down 1/30 of your building.
Okay.
Second thing is, and it's just a precautionary thing, and I don't know that there's any issue, ADA parking. I don't, I didn't think this building was going to be all at grade level because the property slopes, in which case handicap parking needs to be pretty much at grade level. It's very difficult to get handicap parking space to be flat enough that you can get away with it. I know I ran into that problem a lot of times, Lego land, and it was a lot easier. So just, I want to make sure it works for you, rather than have to come back and say, all right, we need to change something else.
Yeah, what we did was, we did this a little bit different than the other building. We actually knew we have a positive slope up where the hot, where those handicap, and there's no steps on the side.
And make sure the slope is compatible with the Indian code. One in twelve, and that's, that's, one in twelve is if you had a ramp. It's got to be divided on that because you got to.
Two percent, two percent or less. And that's what we had to lay down, but I'll go barefoot or point it out more.
And then the last question is about the D O T. When are we going to hear back on them? Did we hear anything?
The applicant did hear back from them. I think the last meeting, if they were at, I don't know if you were there. I read the board, the D O T response, and at that time, the board asked the speaker for John Cannon, and he'd been looking at everything, I just haven't heard back from him, I expected him here this evening.
Good enough. So I'm still waiting for John.
I have one question. Handicap parking reminds me, the third one from the left has no handicap parking in it.
Correct.
Why?
We put in the required number of spaces, that's what we put in.
So you, when you have a tenant that comes in there that has a handicap spot, he can't park, he's got to park all the way down one side or the other, because you put in the required amount of handicap spots.
Oh.
It's no big deal, just to put a little thing on.
We can add, we can add, but shouldn't we go, we want what's required by code?
Okay, so you, when you go to rent out that spot there, make sure that they have no handicap people coming in, because I'm telling you right now, as a person who is handicapped, I'm not walking from here all the way down there.
Obviously not, but that's why the people from the state of New York who made the codes, we made it that, the way that a professional would hear with license.
Five, so we can't make six, we have six buildings?
I think you're right in that, that's the number, you took the total number of parking space, I think you're correct. I think the second question becomes placement of it in terms of each building use, because I think that generally, a handicap person is supposed to be closest, the closest parking space to the entrance, and in some cases, that may not be true, depending on what's being right, I think Diana's correct.
So the way it works with this, with this business, and when people will come here to lease the space, and if they happen to have a handicapped person that's an employee, they'll make sure they have it, and if not, they will request, because the same way they request, in general, when somebody moves in, they request, you can build out for a small office, a big office. So they'll come in and they put in their request. Me as a landlord, who want to have them as a business, I will make sure they have what they need, and I will do all their requirements, make sure, and if that space that's available doesn't have the handicap, we'll make sure that we either re-stripe and we transfer one handicap from over there when it's not needed, and we can always transfer, it's only a striving issue, to make sure. So it's always going to be in our best interest, if somebody happens to have an employee that gets, gets a bit injured and needs, and comes and leaves, it's always to be my best interest to make sure this tenant has their needs, and a person with a wheelchair, handicap needs, gets their requirement. I can add that this is not, as you can see with the other building, that this is not such a heavy populated, the parking spots are minimal. If you look at the other buildings, which is bigger, it's like the parking spots is empty most of the day, I don't know if there's 15 people working in this building, and we're preparing here, and the way much, Joe, I'm not sure the amount of, way, way more than it's needed, just because the requirements, and there is requirements, and stuff like that.
Since you're saying, you think you'd modify the parking spaces to make them handicap look accessible to people?
Well, we can, yeah. I'll be, I'll be, it'll be to my best interest, to everybody's best interest, and, you know, I'm talking, if we're talking here like a huge retail shopping center, but it's not, it's not something that usual, you change a parking spot here and there. So here, we're talking here, a small building, that's, that the owner is, the landlord is on top of it, to make sure that the tenants have their required needs. It'd always be to our best, it's not, it's not going to be a huge investment.
Are any of these units going to be open to the public to come besides the tenants that are in there to do business with the tenants within the units?
It's not a retail, it's not being approved.
No, it's not retail, but meaning as a service business.
I have nobody lined up for this. I wish I would, I would have been approved 10 months ago. But in general, it's not, it's not that, it's not a few hundred thousand square people in, I was talking at 5 to 10,000 tenants, and they come as they go, it's not something ready to market yet. Far away to put this out for the market.
Frank, I'm sorry, I had to put you on the spot. Are you satisfied these could be made handicap accessible?
Yes, you mentioned the strapping, but there's also some signage, and I'm sure the parcel owner doesn't want the Department of Justice coming down and say, hey, we need an accessible parking spot because one of the employees got injured. So I'm okay with what's proposed, it meets the vote, it's, we all know that the color is somewhat bare bones minimum, but nevertheless, it meets the vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Joe? I'm assuming that the building itself will be earth's growth tones?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I should have brought up tonight at the public hearing, we did have some wanderings, although, what Sean's comments was to, I'm assuming that we actually did have the public hearing, but the answer to that question is yes or it's all.
Why are you looking at the time? I did read somewhere that the wall fill was described as phosphorus impacted this building, would I assume in no way exacerbate the chemistry of the water? Phosphorus, you take that.
Well, we.
I want to make a question too, Joe.
Okay, well, we do have a full storm warning retention plan. Everything that gets directed to that bio retention facility before it's discharged offsite, there's no, there's no storm water that comes into this facility that does not go to that bio retention copy board and is discharged.
Is it the, is it accurate to say that it won't hand further phosphorus?
Yes.
So it already impacted waterway?
Yes, I believe that it would impact the safety of this structure properly.
The other thing you may want to consider is perhaps a provision or restriction on the use of fertilizer.
That would be a good idea, which I've assumed of yet, but thank you. Have we done likewise with insects, insecticides, herbicides?
You generally do on some applications, yeah, but it's a case by case basis, you don't do it on all. But in this case, if the wall fill is phosphorus limited, we don't want to add more phosphorus, right? So it's not a whole lot of landscaping in this area that I expect them to apply fertilizer to, but you can definitely.
The other question, irrigation?
Well, how does the board feel about?
As far as the herbicide, I don't have an issue with that, it should be restricted. Absolutely. And washout towards the river.
All right, nothing else.
The landscaping on the berm and surrounding areas, how is that going to be maintained and watered? Where's the water coming from for that?
We don't have any, we don't have any plants for irrigation. It's not usually on a commercial space.
I'm not, I'm not thinking of permanent irrigation system, I mean, just as far as growing vegetation, you know, for the whole growing cycles until it takes root, so to speak. You know, it's got to be watered, not rely just on the heavens to take care of that for us.
I'll ask the landscape architect, but I'm assuming. I'll ask the landscape architect, but I'm assuming if the well's not aligned yet, you know, depending on what goes first, the water truck or something, they'll have to do with that. But I'll, I'll respond to that.
Sean, maybe you can help me out. Does the water demand taken into consideration washing of the buildings, maybe washing of the trucks?
The, the washing of the building is going to be fairly frequent, I would imagine. What would be more, as the chairman said, the initial stages of the landscaping hasn't yet really started to develop. Use a lot of water at that time. The avenue has relatively low water demand relative to probably the well yield, and they probably could add those calculations there just to demonstrate that they require that. That's where they're pushing it through water.
So Joe, if you could do that, maybe the water consumption demands for irrigation and other uses than the per person calculations.
Are they responsible for replacing trees if they die for how many years?
Forever.
Forever?
Partly advanced to the plan.
I'll be quiet.
Other comments or concerns?
Kelly?
So the only thing I had for tonight was, if you wanted, I mean, we're waiting for John Cannon, but I can start the draft of a resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Chair?
I'm okay. I have a motion to authorize council to prepare a resolution of conditional approval for this application.
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda. Apologies on the vein. Plans of, on the vein?
On the vein.
On the vein, okay, sorry. Ten Strack Road, fourteen dash seven dash three. Application site plan approval for a single-family dwelling on one plus or minus acres on Strack Road in the RU zone.
Very good.
AQ three stream corridor and reservoir watershed overlays. We're here this evening for our initial presentation to begin the secret process. Jay, welcome.
Good evening, Jay Samuelson, Engineering Properties, here to represent the On the Veins. As you so well openly stated, this is a one-acre lot on Strack Road. It's an existing vacant lot in the RU zone, the stream and reservoir corridor overlay and the AQ three overlay. Because the proposed structure will be graded at five hundred square feet, we have to be within the stream corridor, reservoir overlay, we need plenty more approval. So it's a simple residential dwelling with septic system and well. We're here for cycle and approval from that. The one interesting caveat that we have is there is a paper street that cuts through the back of the lot that I will, we believe we have the rights to cross it and utilize it for our pipe to get to our septic area in the back, but I'll let Mr. Thornton find on that as well. But again, this is a very simple residential lot plan essentially, but because we're in the stream corridor, reservoir overlay, we need plenty more approval.
So, you Sean?
Essentially ditto to what Jay had said, it is a very straightforward application. We're going to hear from Kelly on the paper street. The only other item that I had of really any pertinence was the applicant has substandard area, plot area and frontage, and they're relying on a portion of the code that allows them to develop and have smaller side, so they get relief. One of the conditions of the code to get that relief is that the mapping file of the county, this subdivision is very old, I think nineteen thirty-two, twenty-one, twenty-nine, okay. So I just wanted Kelly to confirm that that was actually filed with the county and, or what was filed with the county satisfies that group requirement.
Ow, this is on me, I'm fighting. Okay, so I actually have a lot, no, just kidding, I don't have a lot. This is a pretty straightforward application. So first, it is a type-two action. Second, it's not required to go to GML based on the, to have with the county. Third, a public hearing is required on the application, as Sean said, it's a major application memo. The compliance for section ninety-seven thirty-six is filing with the map of the county. That map is satisfactory, it has been filed with the county. The interesting bit for this is that it is a public road, Strack Road, so they do have access. They don't need any variances for that, no two ADA, no nothing like that. The title company has insured access for the sewer system across the road. It is considered part of this lot, so they do have access to that. That's not considered an accessory structure, there's no building permit or anything needed for that. So there's no problem with putting that over there. If they wanted to put a structure over there or something else, we may have an issue, but we don't. So, oh my goodness, Kelly doesn't have a problem.
I've got a couple of little questions, and they're meaningless. Do you think it sounds so simple?
I don't, don't jinx this, Lee, this is like a first.
The adjacent driveway?
Yes.
Fringes four and a half feet into the parcel area again. Is there going to be an easement, or is that driveway active?
That driveway is definitely active. We can talk to neighbor about developing an easement for that. At this point in time, nothing's been defined, but we can talk to them about that.
Any resolution would have something that doesn't improve any encroachments.
Tygus Road, we talked about, it's not natural decline creating two separate tax boxes. It's all continuous, okay. Was there ever a dwelling or any type of structure on this property prior?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay. And the last question I had was, looking at the map, lightly shaded lines listed all these little tiny parcels as block I, lots three, four, five, and six, and block J, lots three and five, are those?
Yes.
Meaningful or meaningless?
Yeah, so here's the filed map from nineteen.
With the gazillion lots.
With the gazillion lots, nineteen twenty-nine. This lot is part of all, somehow the lotlines do not follow the original blocks that were created. They are portions of each of them going all the way down.
Each block is not its own tax box.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So there's no lotline changes?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
So what you can do is you can schedule, Neil is raising his hand.
I just have a couple of questions, do you? The Tygus Road or whatever, by approval is, we're not saying that he owns that.
No, he does not own that, but he has access to access his septic system.
So whoever in that, and I know we've run into these problems up there before. So whoever else thinks they have access to that, in theory, we still have that access.
They do still have that access, yes. And you're not infringing on that at all by doing this.
Good. And the only other question I really have to do with separations and the depth, distance of this septic system to any reservoir or anything like that, what we?
They need to design the septic system. It was just an outline of where it's proposed to go. Have, have you done any soil testing?
We've done some preliminary ones, and we're going to do some more in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so that obviously would have to be worked out before. In terms of the depth, they don't, they don't know whether it's a combined of the shallow system or the line of the individual system.
Okay, and the same question is distances from neighbors?
They're going to have to confirm separation.
Good, no, correct.
Also from the wells.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions? Mark, Kelly, back to you.
You can make a motion to schedule the public hearing for August seventh?
We have to type it?
You can type it as a type-two.
Motion. Could I have a motion to set this project as a type-two action under secret?
No move.
Phil, second by? Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? And, sorry, public hearing?
August seventh?
August seventh. Will we have sort of information we need as far as questions?
I don't think he needs to say anything.
Here's the septic design.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman. The board wants the applicant to develop the plans and put the details on there for the well and the septic that you create for the public hearing. You also can have a public hearing, get public comment, and then have the applicant come back with the design information before you take any action on the application.
I think people, in the area, neighbors, whatever, may have some concerns about the well and septic. So I, I, either, I think we should have it, hold it open, do you have it then on the seventh, or just delay it?
Well, we do know the locations of both, essential.
And I'll make sure that, I do have, I do have the wells, I know the wells adjacent, and that's right up against Strack Road, so all their septic are in the rear, so I'm ninety-nine percent sure we need all separations.
I think you will, but nevertheless, when we build in an existing subdivision, we always have people panic.
Maybe just be prepared.
Yes, I will.
Could I have a motion to set the public hearing then for August seventh? Diana, second by? Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
You're against.
Yeah.
But no.
One of them.
Against. One against.
Okay, and I was going to say, if you'd like, you could authorize a drafting of a resolution, which you don't need to approve at the next meeting, but you could have it in case you chose to.
I'd like to be sure.
I'm just throwing it out there, it's a single-family house.
Only because we still don't know what we're going to have as far as housing conditions and all that stuff. It's a, this is going to be a work in progress.
That's up to you. It's totally up to you, you don't have to.
I don't see a problem proceeding with a draft.
Always have to wait.
I just, I'm still going to be waiting for the, for all the septic systems. It's not going to be available then, so I, I will see how you can draft it anyway.
She can draft it since we have her for the time being.
Basically, what you're saying is, what you're trying to say is we're going to use her while we can.
And we have three other resolutions we want to bring up too.
Could I have a motion then to authorize council to prepare a draft conditional resolution of approval for this application?
No move.
Phil, second by?
I'll second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'll say yes again. I'm against it.
Okay, I'm against. Okay. Jay, that's all we can do for this evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you as well.
That made me laugh, that made me smile.
Is that Mr. Chairman abused? Yeah, feels great to be abused.
Oh, that's, that's.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. Appreciate it, that's a good one.
It's too late for the appreciation. Next item on the agenda.
It didn't say Saturday, so that's.
T-Mobile Northeast LLC, twenty-four dash one dash one thirteen. We have an application for a site plan for a minor's wireless communications facility on fifty-one plus or minus acres on Pulaski Highway, County Route Six. IO's AI zone, AQ three overlay, we're here this evening for an initial presentation to begin the secret process.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Frank Ferraro, turning on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC. As you indicated, T-Mobile's here seeking approval for a wireless telecommunications colocation facility at the subject property. It's presently developed with a hundred and fifty-foot tall monopole and a forty-by-six feet fenced equipment compound. AT&amp;T Wireless was approved by, they received special permit approval for the tower in two thousand and fourteen, and amazingly, they're still the only carrier on the pole. T-Mobile has an area of need around a goshen which they want to address through a colocation facility. They are proposing eight panel antennas at the one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-foot level. AT&amp;T is at the one-hundred-and-forty-seven-foot level, and that's to the center of the antennas. The top of the antenna, T-Mobile antenna, would be one-forty-one. On the ground, they're proposing one equipment cabinet, one battery cabinet, a fiber management box, a TELTO cube PVC box, a fiber cable bridge, and three cables, which will be in a ten, on a ten-by-fifteen concrete pad within the existing enclosed compound. So, you know, in a nutshell, there's also, I should mention, there is one two-foot diameter dish that's proposed, also enough for the backfall for the fiber. Generally, those dish antennas are temporary in nature until they can get permanent fiber service at the site. So instead of waiting for the fiber companies to show up, which will take months, they build the site with that dish, they can get up online right away, and then when the, when the fiber comes, they can take it down. So that's essentially it, there's no expansion of the height of the tower, there's no expansion of the existing fence compound. One thing I should, the other thing I should mention is, as we originally proposed it, there is three, there are three, or a couple of eight-foot antennas. That would kick us into the major wireless telecommunications facility definition in your code. We had a good meeting with staff, and yeah, my client's able to change that eight-foot antenna to a six-foot antenna, so we can keep it a minor facility, and, you know, which is a permitted use in the zone. So that's, that's it in a nutshell, Mr. Chairman.
I have three questions.
Sure.
First one, you mentioned there was a need in the ocean for this installation. Do we have any kind of mapping that shows the dead spots or dead zones where it's weak?
I mean, we.
Or are we just presuming that it's required?
Because it's a permitted use, you generally don't prepare those plots. If we're coming in for a special permit or some kind of variance, then we have that kind of presentation. But essentially, for what it's worth, the T-Mobile is spending the money to put the facility in. Generally means they have a need in this area that they want to address. They're going to be paying AT&amp;T rent to be on the tower in the compound. So, you know, those are indicators that they, they need to keep up the service in this area.
And the other two questions. Structural analysis, obviously was done with the monopole and AT&amp;T's panels and everything that went along with that. Has that been reevaluated with the weight of your square, with all the?
Yes.
Pertinences on that?
Yeah, we have.
Justified foundation and structure still strong enough to support it?
Yes, we did a structural, the structural was done based upon eight-foot tall antennas or more wind load. So based upon the comments, you know, from staff, we're already revising the report based on six-foot antennas. So the structural passed by a lot with eight-footers, so the six-foot antennas should be, the structural should look even better.
And then the final question I have right now is, is there any interference anticipated between your panels and AT&amp;T's, having them close proximity one below the other?
Absolutely not, because they're licensed in different frequency bands from the FCC, so we don't cross over. A ten-foot separation from the center of antenna to the center of antenna is standard in the industry, and that's where we are.
Sean?
Couple of quick items, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, and it had prior approval, or it was prior approval on the site back in twenty-fourteen, so this is amended site plan. I have made a recommendation, you discussed with Kelly whether amended specialty use permit is required.
It's not.
If it's not, then your code requires, if it's consistent and not a substantial change, then you approve it without a public hearing, and so you don't have the discretion in this instance for a public hearing. You do have some discretion in terms of what the applicant submits. Mr. Chairman, the best for structural analysis, that's required, they have to submit a certification. They also have to submit a certification from the RF engineer that they don't interfere with emergency networks. That was discussed with the applicant, they're aware of that requirement. However, your code allows you to request additional information. So if the board wants to see the propagation studies that the applicant has prepared, presumably prepared before they went ahead with this application, then you can request those. The code has a requirement that if the site is not used for six months or a twelve-month period, that it be removed. I recommend that you discuss with, want to request a bond or require a bond for that removal. You've done it in some instances, but not all. And I believe that maybe all I have, unless you have any questions?
The bonds would be used in what situation, Sean?
If the, well, the bond is not required, but you have, in some instances, required it as a condition. The code requires the applicant to move their equipment if it's not used for six months or a twelve-month period.
Okay, great, great.
You've taken those bonds to damage performance that.
And Kelly, if we didn't exercise the bonds, we have to, you know, because we, to delegate, force them to do something, but the code requires.
I would just say, if I meant, T-Mobile's required by the terms of, if they're not, if it's not operable on power, they have to take it down, because obviously the AT&amp;T wants that space available, which is somebody who's going to actually utilize it. So, I mean, obviously, it's the board's discretion. We would ask for a waiver of the bond, just because of the maintenance of the bond over a long period of time. These are ten, generally twenty-year leases, twenty-five-year leases, and it's just a long time to maintain a removable bond. And, you know, T-Mobile is kind of a proven, proven commodity as a carrier, and they're not really in the business of leaving their equipment behind. a carrier, and they're not really in the business of leaving their equipment behind.
Just so the board's clear, it's not a waiver, though, there's no code requirement, you're not, you're not.
I'll agree with you.
Wrong person.
So you, you have a structural report or you want preparing one?
Well, we have one already, it was just done on the basis of having eight-foot antennas on the tower, and it passed, we generally don't submit the structural upfront through zoning unless it's asked for, but, um, we're revising it now because actually we're going to have six-foot antennas, so the wind load on the tower is actually be less, so it's, we have a passing structural.
I personally, I would like to see the structural analysis, and do you know what the wind load is?
Uh, there was actually a suggestion in Mr. Hoffman's report, um, that the structural be prepared, be provided to him for review and approval, and we were.
In my screening.
Yeah, I'll give as many copies as you need, let me see if I have it here, I might do, all right, so I do have a copy of it here, just mind you, this is with the eight-foot antennas, so the tower, tower structure, um, is twenty-one point eight percent of capacity and the base foundation is thirty-eight point five percent of, of capacity, that's, that's with the, uh, the T-Mobile antennas, the larger ones.
With the, uh, this is a collapsible, uh, monopole that's there now?
Yeah.
Is there any issue as far as adding those extra, uh, the, the extra tier of panels as far as making it, I don't wanna say top head because it's designed to accommodate, um, the original analysis, was that done to assume that the pole had the maximum number of panels?
I, I, I do not recall the original analysis, but, uh, and I haven't seen the structural report, but what I would assume would happen is the structural engineer, um, would explain the existing conditions, including the hinge design, the self-pelapsing, and take that into consideration as they do this in policy, so if they didn't know that, uh, we would ask them to go back and confirm they repaired that condition and include it in the calculation.
Okay, good, thank you.
A couple of questions, the, that analysis, does it include the dish for the temporary fiber?
I have to double check, but it should include everything.
Okay, including temporary dish.
Correct. Yeah, should be all loads should put on there, I can check the inventory if you want to put.
But AT&T, um, their original approvals, right, if they abandoned or they don't use it for six months, aren't they required to remove everything off their towers, and that would assume they include any vendor that's on it?
I don't, I don't know if that is the way your code is working, it's on a happen by happen basis, so if AT&T was not using their equipment, uh, they would have to move their equipment from the tower, that's the next thing they have to remove, the tower.
Right, but the tower belongs to AT&T, right?
Yes, it does, as far as I know.
That's correct. So that, wouldn't that be considered equipment, the tower itself?
I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't think so, I don't think the way your code is written that it would be, but lucky for you, you have an attorney here.
I can't right now.
Okay, but I'd like to know that.
Sure.
Because then it's moot for him to have anything, you know, because it's AT&T required and.
We're coming down one way or another.
Coming down one way or another, so, and my last comment is, as far as the need, absolutely, goes to this terrible T-Mobile, all of Maple Abbey, it goes in and out, shuts off, you can't even get into my house without Wi-Fi, and I have T-Mobile, just, so there is a need, that's not, that's not fictitious.
There must be a need.
Yes, I say it, it's gotta be a need.
It's always gonna, gotta cover your house anyhow.
Exactly.
Not put it up higher.
With, with, with respect to this bond thing, which is probably a bigger, smaller the other one making it out to be, but, uh, is the intent to, is the intent of the code to require the removal of this stuff, uh, an aesthetic interest, uh, liability interest?
The code is silent on the intent.
Are you, do you have a decision on what you think is the?
No, no, I don't, I, I can give you a, a practical approach to the bond, and I understand why the board's determined, like, bonds, you wanna make sure that you have some insurance that, yes, they're gonna take this down, but from a practical approach at town hall, bonds are kind of tough to take you track of, right, it's a twenty-five-year design life on this thing, so, let's say year fifteen, uh, there's enforcement actions, and this need of bond needs to be acted on, uh, a lot of cases, you might not even remember that the bond's in place, you know, so, uh, they do have to keep in mind that, you know, if somebody at town hall doesn't keep track of this stuff.
So from an engineering perspective, like, you wouldn't, uh, imagine any urgency to removing these grounds if they weren't being used for a month? Like, they can take tons of. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what our, what our interest is in, you know, ensuring that the code is sort of, I obviously want the code to provide it, but, but, um, just wanted to understand that, what the, our interest was.
No, is it, again, the code is silent, there's really no engineering reason to take it down structurally, whether they're active or not active doesn't affect the structure at all, so.
Okay.
Other comments, questions?
One, uh, quick question, just so that I'm clear, when it says the tower's structure is twenty-one point eight percent sufficient, what do you understand that to mean?
That means typically, please correct me on, the tower is usually the maximum, the maximum limit is a hundred and ten percent, and, and when it comes to telecommunications towers, so, once you had the load to report, right now, right now that would indicate there's ninety percent capacity still left in the pole, if it was twenty percent load in that group, on the, on the cover of that pole, so it's a very, it's a very low load.
It's a very low ten percent.
Correct, that's what they designed, that's, that's the maximum they just, um, in twenty-five years, that's the maximum they designed to, that I've seen of them, so. So then they start reinforcing, you know, they'll reinforce the, the bolts at, you know, the base of the tower, there's a bunch of things they can do, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pretend I'm an engineer, although I am, although I am.
It's a little weird.
I've never heard Kelly say that. It's not gonna pretend.
Other comments?
No, I don't, I have nothing else.
So, um, in terms of secret, the board can assume lead agency status, there are no other involved agencies, and you can type this action as unlisted with the caveat that I do need an SEAF part one from the applicant.
Could I have said motion to assume lead agency and to, uh, declare this project an unlisted action?
Jeremy. I will make the motion.
You did, we need a second.
Awesome.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Um, it does require GML referrals, so I'll do that, which, um, we should add a little bit, um, so Sean mentioned the public hearing, so what your code says is if you find it's consistent with the terms of the special permit and doesn't represent a substantial change in their approved site plan, you don't require a hearing, um, if you think that it is a substantial change, then you would hold a hearing, um, if you don't hold a hearing, then it just gets referred to the farm that's nearby, the ERB, and the county, so it's up to this board if you wanna hold a public hearing.
Phil, how many antennas?
Eight. So, a full compound.
West height?
I'm sorry.
What height?
They are, the center line of the antennas on it at thirty-seven feet, and then, since we're gonna be changing to a six-foot antenna, the top of it will be a hundred and forty, the tower is a hundred and fifty right now, so, we're, we're below AT&T.
No, I don't think we need a public.
True. I agree.
All right. No, no public hearing here.
I agree.
I don't think anybody would come.
That's not the answer. He's gonna come no matter what.
Well, I mean, I mean from that neighborhood.
Actually, he's gonna sit here. Marty.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Motion to waive the public hearing?
That's coming next, I'm just waiting for someone to make it.
I'll make it.
So I have a second, second by Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, no public hearing.
Okay, so we'll make the referrals, so with the referrals and the timeframe, the sooner you get to do the SEAF, the better, and then if, what?
It'll be, it'll be.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the county is gonna ask for it anyway, so, county is gonna say, hey, Kelly, where's the EAF, I'm gonna be like, oh, shoot, I don't know how to get.
Is she on Monday?
That's perfect, um, so I'll prepare for you for your next meeting, the SEAF, and again, if you'd like, you could authorize a draft, you can ask for a resolution, which you don't have to consider, but you can, the earliest that this could be on would be your August twenty-first meeting.
Could I have a motion to authorize council to prepare a conditional resolution of approval for this application? Eric, second by?
I'll say.
Phil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one thing for the applicant, so.
Does that impact our?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I've interrupted you before, if that was, so, uh, the general municipal wall referral, uh, the county has thirty days to respond, if you make a submission on Monday, which is the twentieth, let's say, uh, council doesn't get it out, refer it to the next day or the day thereafter, then this board may not be able to take action on August twenty-first option, so it would be who should submit it in as quickly as possible.
Okay. Do I submit that through the town or can I send that directly?
If you send it to both Grace and myself, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Probably do have to.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, have a good night.
Good. I can get it out or just? Someone has said, wasn't needed.
For our August seventh meeting, Sean?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On the July third minutes, I did not have Gio's name down for that first vote because he was not in attendance, he came in at seven-thirty-five-ish, so he did not, so him and Neil switched places.
Okay.
You want me to note that in the minutes?
Not necessary, you had someone here, I guess.
So Neil was on the first vote and then they switched places, and then chair.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew, I knew there was something, I just, I didn't remember.
Yes, having looked at both of them side by side, you know, this one had Gio, um, chair.
Yeah, I know him on the.
So I was like, for his chair, he must've been here for the vote, two different.
He walked out.
Perfect, back to you, Sean.
So you have a public hearing for ten strack that you just said, you have Goshen.
You'd rather talk slower.
Sorry, you have Goshen Liberty Solar, just wanna get home to interrupt Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, Goshen Liberty Solar.
Where, where do you have it?
I don't know, I'm gonna find out when I call the hall.
I had pork chop.
Uh, you will have new application, Ori Stone, which is an amended site plan application, and then lastly, I expect you'll have Gotham Properties, presuming that you have a decision back from the ZVA.
The first one again was the public hearing for?
Uh, ten strack, the one you just said.
Yep. Any comments from the board, any issues? If not, kind of motion to close the meeting. Eric, second by?
Neil.
Neil, all in favor, say aye.[1797.62]